Good afternoon. We want to go ahead and get started with this meeting for discussion. We want to ask those that are in the back of the room to come forth and if you want to participate in this discussion that we're going to have, that you come up front and be prepared to come up to the podium here. But I want to say, first of all, that the special council meeting that was originally scheduled has been canceled. This is not a special council meeting, but this is a meeting that has been called by just a few of the council members here that you see here. So this is not an official meeting to discuss official city business. But we're here to take comments and questions from you, the public, and we are prepared to answer questions as we can. We, I believe that we have been silenced too long in this city. Our democracy has been taken away and we have been silenced too long. So although we have not received the legal written opinion from the Circuit Court Judge in Ingham County, we realize that we have no legal authority to conduct city official business. So therefore, we're just coming together to hear from you, the public, and to have a dialogue. And so we're prepared to share with you what we anticipate for the future here, and we want to hear from you, the public, as we move forward as individual council members here, so that we can be better prepared to know your concerns and address your concerns and make sure that your concerns are a part of our agendas. So I want to thank you all for being here, and we want to begin by inviting individuals up to the public, but before that, we'll give each member of the council here that is present to speak to you.
Good afternoon. I thank all of you for coming out today to get more informed about what is going on in the city of Flint, and we're anxiously waiting to hear from you, because this is the first opportunity that you will have to interface with your elected officials without the impediment of an emergency manager. So we wanted to make sure that opportunity was available to you all, and I encourage you all to take advantage of this opportunity. As we put together an agenda to go forth to help operate this city, we need to hear from you first to make sure that is going to be at the forefront of any agenda that we put together. And so we'll be taking notes today and making sure that we'll be answering your questions as you present them, and we will be taking your comments very seriously, and we will be putting them on a very robust agenda that's scheduled for our very next meeting, probably be Monday, but we're waiting for the written order, following the verbal order from the judge this past week. So it's a little uncertainty about the legalities of who has authority of the city of Flint currently, but we want you to know and understand this, is that you guys are at the forefront of many of our minds, and that we work for you, and that's why we're here today, to listen to you. And it's going to be a more inviting environment today in this room, and so we will allow a lot of leeway as it relates to things. And we ask you to be kind, even for some of our colleagues that may not be here and to us that is here. But we do thank you. We don't want to belabor this, and I want to pass it to my colleague, Councilman Sargeant.
Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming out. In America, we have what is called a representative form of government, and in Flint, that was taken away. The judge was good enough to file an injunction for us, so we could get back to the representative form of government that we serve, and I want to thank everyone for coming to be part of the solution today. So let's get started, and I don't know how we're going to start this, but...
Okay. We want, I want to ask if first, if Nayyara Sharif, if she would please come up front and kind of give us an overview. She was, she attended the Circuit Court hearing before Judge Aquilina, and we just want to ask if she would kind of just give us a brief about what was the judge's order from her, from her opinion and from her understanding.
Thank you. Before I start, I want to say, like, I wasn't the only one who was there. There were several members, including the Flint Chapter, the NWA CP, Stand Up For Democracy, and other folks who were, was there as well. So Judge Aquilina was the one who heard the case, and prior to the case, the plaintiff, which was Sam Muma, and the defendant, like, they filed briefs, like, stating their arguments, and they kind of did like a summary of those arguments. So I'm gonna, like, talk a little bit about that, about those arguments that they gave, and highlighting some of the questions from the notes that I took from the hearing. So the argument was basically the fact that Public Act 4, which is the emergency manager law, was in violation of the Open Meetings Act, because the meetings for the Flint Financial Review Team was held in secret. They weren't open, there wasn't notice, there wasn't public notice, the public wasn't notified, the public was unable to attend, the public couldn't speak at those meetings, and there were no notes. So the lawyer for the plaintiff basically said that in the history of the United States, no one unelected person has had this much power as the emergency managers do with making these sort of decisions, and then highlighting what Public Act 4 does, which that person can dissolve municipalities and forms of government, they can bust unions and go into collective bargaining, and I'm pretty sure other people can kind of talk about that, but basically highlighting what the law does. And also saying that the Flint Financial Review Team was performing a governmental function, because they were looking at records, and then they made decisions. And so then they went to what the Open Meetings Act of 1976 says, with how they defined meetings and some of the actions that the financial review team did, which they made a report, they met five different times, they had findings, and then the public was unable to attend those meetings. And then also, that the lawyer highlighted, highlighted that it was a tremendous amount of hubris by Governor Snyder and Treasurer Andy Dillon, and this was irreparable harm, this caused irreparable harm, because he can terminate contracts and dissolve municipalities and sell assets and remove the power of elected officials. And so then the plaintiff said that, yes, the meetings weren't published, but they were just answering questions. And the, one of the things that I thought that was, that the plaintiff, I mean, the defendant, which was the, which was representing the state, they said that the meetings weren't held in secret, they just weren't open, and the judge had quite a lot to say about that, and basically said that, well, was the media invited? And she was like, no. And the judge basically said, well, if the media was not able to film the stuff, then it was not, it wasn't open. If we're finding out, the same as the media's finding out, and we're all outside of a locked room where someone's making decisions, so that's not right. And one of the things that the judge asked several times was, why did the city council not make an appeal? She actually said it around five times. And this is especially troubling, because this is what, this is what the state used to justify, why, why we should still, why these meetings should remain closed, that the city must be happy with it, because they didn't raise, they didn't raise anything, they didn't say anything. And finally, the lawyer representing Sam Muma said that, well, I can't speak to what the city council did or did not do, but we can only talk about what the Open Meetings Act does, and this is in violation of the Open Meetings Act. So then I'll just move along with the ruling, which the judge Aquilina basically said that, yes, the Flint Financial Review Team was, was performing in the interest of a public body. They were meeting, and they appointed Mike Brown as emergency manager, he made decisions, because he's also performing legislative duties, because he is, he has absorbed the powers of the Flint City Council. And then she also said that because there wasn't anything in the law in Public Act 4, that, that there's something different that says that, no, the meetings have to be held in, they have to be closed meetings. She said that then, her understanding was the Open Meetings Act has to move alongside Public Act 4, and she went on to say that she felt the Open Meetings Act was just as important, or even more important than our Constitution, because the government should not act in secret, that the ideas of having an open and transparent government is something that's, that's integral and forms the foundation of our democracy. So she said that, yes, the state was in violation of the Open Meetings Act. She's invalidating all decisions for that, because that Mike Brown has done, that the state is going to have to redo this entire process, and once they do, they have to comply with the Open Meetings Act. They had to pay attorney's fees, and they were fined a thousand dollars, and the state wanted to request a stay, or just like, let things as they were, as they lay, as they were appealed, and she was like, no, you're going to have to start from scratch. So I know that there's other people who probably signed up, who was there as well, and they can speak towards that a bit better, but that was kind of like the Cliff Notes of what occurred at the, at the hearing. And I want to also say that there were, like, we were there, but there weren't any elected officials there, so, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for that overview, and we, we had individuals to sign the speaker slips, to come up and share, make comments to us, the members of the council that are here. And we're going to call you up, and if you will come to the podium and share your comments with us, and because of the sake of time, we, we want to ask that you would do this in five minutes as you come up. So the first person is Craig Smith.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
As a resident of this community, I'm frustrated with our elected officials. I'm frustrated with Michael Brown. He was in position as a interim mayor between Williamson and the Walling administration, and at that time, he paid consulting fees to Prima Civitas, which is a company that he's familiar with, because he works with them. And that was about $125,000, I believe. Once he went in, in the position of emergency manager, which I don't agree with either, he's being paid $170,000 a year, and at my math, on a 20-day, 20-day month, week, or, excuse me, 20-day work month, that's about $750 a day that we're paying him. Now, he went to the block club meetings, and he talked about what savings he had generated, where he had cut some positions and saved $650,000. And then he passed out some brochures that detailed appointments that he made temporarily, some of those people three months, six months, and year-long terms. I added up all those numbers, along with the elected officials that he reinstated at their partial pay, and also the master planner that he hired at $80,000 plus. And those numbers came up to $620,000. So he saved 650, that he claims, but he spent 620. Now, I'm frustrated with the deficit. It's been reported that it's $11 million deficit. At one of those neighborhood meetings, I explained to him that recently, the Flint Journal reported that property values in Flint went down 24 percent, so tax revenue was $4 million less. Now, I want you to understand that as we continue to not have public safety, and as the property values dwindle, the line is not going up. Now, I read the Flint Journal today, and it talks about the deficit is 20 to 25 million, and that Michael Brown wants to borrow $20 million from the state, payable over 30 years, and Walling has been supporting everything that is going on so far. But first off, I want you to understand that in my business, and I've got rental homes, I know whether I'm dealing in a profit or a loss, and it's frustrating to me that some of these officials don't even know what our budget is or our profit and loss is from one month to the next. If it's going to be $20 million and the property values are going down, how are we ever going to pay back $20 million to the state that they're proposing to borrow? We need to see an upward trend, which is not going to happen for a while. Now, Michael Brown also has not made any hard decisions, like looking at the impound lot, it looks like that's the easiest and quickest way to generate some money by reinstating the impound lot. He needs to look at reduction of some of the positions that are in the city management, and not just look at contracts of the union workers. He needs to look at saving every dollar that he can through energy savings, lights turned off, air conditioners, whatever he can do, but so far, I don't see that he's done much of anything. With all that being said, I just hope that you council members that are here today, and I think you are wanting to do the things that are right, I hope that you take control, go back, look at the budget, and see what kind of a plan we can put in place. But we certainly can't borrow our way out of debt. Thank you.
The next person is Shirley Taylor.
Good afternoon, brothers and sisters.
Good afternoon.
God bless America. And I'm glad that somebody other than me see that we don't have a democracy here in Flint. We have a dictatorship. And I don't see the purpose of having Mike Brown. He's controlling this city. He's laid, he's laid off two-thirds of the police. And I might see a police in our neighborhood maybe once a month, and it's somebody from over at Mott, Mott College. One of the securitys might come through there. We never see a policeman down there. And when my sons were killed, seven people had called about these stalkers in our neighborhood. I stopped at the police station, gave them the make, model, year, color, license plate, and who was driving the cars. Hadn't came out there and done a thing. My children's cases are in cold case files. Mr. Wallings, Mr. Locke, are male citizens, holding a place, doing nothing. Both of them told me, both of them told me to my face, that since I had been in touch with the Department of Justice, the FBI, that they were not going to have any meetings with me, nor conversations with me. And I went right back to the FBI department and told Dawn the same thing. She's a supervisor there. She said, "He couldn't have told you that." I took my tape recorder out of my pocket and played it for her. I made a complaint at their unbugsmen's office the same day, and she was so upset, she said, "They can't, they don't have a right to do that." I said, "Well, they did. I'm not going to have any conversations with you. My children were fruitful, educated, Christian young men, and most people knew Chris, because he worked in city government and stuff. He and Eric Mays pretty much put Mayor Williamson in there, because they campaigned for him from dusk till dawn." And, you know, I, we need the National Guard in here. And another thing, the school system, these teachers don't care, we have some good teachers, but we, there are rotten apples in every barrel. They throw these kids out of school for going to the locker, for going to the bathroom. Well, they might have a problem, they might need to go to the bathroom. We need to go to the bathroom sometime more than other times. And they'll throw these kids out of school. You throw them out of school the first time, they get behind. You throw them out again, they get behind. Kids tease them. We have libraries. Parents would work, should work with the teachers. Every teacher that taught my children or my grandchildren, I knew them, because I would go to the school and talk with them. My children went to Falls Avenue Christian School until they became of age that they had to go to public school. I kept the same practice. I went to public school, I got to know all of the teachers, and we have libraries. Send those kids to school, have them sign in at the library, give them something to do, give them assignments, give them their regular assignments, so they won't get behind. They get so far behind until they're going to drop out of school, they're going to be angry...
Excuse me, Ms. Taylor, can you wrap up?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
But they're going to be angry, they're going to be behind their counterparts, and where are they going to end up, over there in the jail?
Yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Okay, next is Mike Kilbra.
I came tonight because I thought there was a full city council meeting. I'm not sure what happened, I saw the note on the door, but on behalf of the Flint Area Chamber of Commerce, we have concerns about the city of Flint's one vote on the Genesee County Convention and Visitors Bureau. There's another meeting tomorrow to attempt to shift a great deal of cash and a building. The building was purchased for $300,000 not too long ago. There's about $800,000 in cash that was pooled through the dedicated and very good watchful eye of Mr. Jerry Preston during his 15 years as a cheerleader for this community. Mr. Preston, as I think everyone realizes, was removed, and that removal eliminated a political enemy that allowed a push to become reality in trying to get the hotel tax, which in 2010 was about $1.2 million collected by our hotel owners as a tax on everybody that wants to come to Flint, Michigan. That tax, 35 years ago, a gentleman by the name of Arnie Wally got together with other hotel owners, went to the state legislature, and formed a Visitors Convention Bureau here, so that they could pool the resources to go outside of Michigan or outside of Flint and bring visitors to this community. Somehow, the hotel owners, now only number, number six on that board, of a 25-member board controlled by politicians, who have decided, even though they have to write a $240,000 check to the man who only served three months in his position to go back home to Traverse City, because they lost their funding and that was in his contract, not only have our tax dollars been squandered there, but now they want to take almost a million dollars and move it under the Genesee Regional Chamber of Commerce's umbrella. Those are tax dollars. The first thing the Genesee Regional Chamber President said to the media, is quoted in the Flint Journal, perhaps he was misquoted, but amazingly, he said, "We don't have a plan yet, you know, we're not sure what we're going to do." Well, the first thing they did was decide they don't want to work with a Pure Michigan campaign, which is a national award-winning campaign for promoting a state. So right away, they're deciding that, you know, people that do it best don't do it right, or we're not giving them any money. I think it's deplorable what is happening. Dane Walling, your mayor, is a representative for the city of Flint on that board. He also serves on the Genesee County Regional Chamber of Commerce, so I would hope that the three of U.S. council members, whether you have power or don't have power, I would urge you on behalf of the Flint Area Chamber of Commerce and the business community to A, write a letter, or B, show your face tomorrow morning at 9:00 at the Visitors Convention Bureau meeting, where they intend to shift that money again. They failed by a 9 to 6 vote on Tuesday. It's Mike Sukent, the Flushing Chamber of Commerce and the representative for the Genesee County Cities and Townships, he's their representative, and Al Hatch, from the back to the bricks, as both of them expressed, I guess they're going to keep holding meetings until they wear us out. It was 9 to 6, they have two that won't show, so that means it's 7 to 6. If Dane Walling votes, and the Genesee County Regional Board of Directors has their chairman on that board, so if she also decides to vote, they could conceivably win that vote on Friday. I would believe that somebody in power and politics here in the city government should do something about it. Our chamber, we had phone calls and emails for the last two days of business people up in arms. Hotel owners privately, you know, they're in a very difficult position. If they stand up and scream, then the powers-to-be in county government or the regional chamber aren't going to send them business potentially. So they're in a very awkward position. We need good people in this community, especially the three of you. I urge you to get involved in that issue tomorrow morning, because we're talking about a million dollars. A million dollars. That's in addition to the 240 or 230, I'm not sure of the exact amount that was written to the outgoing president, who, he's finished, he's going home, back to Traverse City, taking our money. Not to mention, a million two a year, 25% going to the county parks. How does that promote tourism for Flint? It doesn't. And 75% going to the Regional Chamber of Commerce, who they have nobody with any marketing experience that I can see to promote getting tourism here. And the first thing they do is say, "We don't want help from the Pure Michigan campaign." I hope that each of you would be as outraged as members of this business community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kilbra.
Thank you for enlightening us to that, to those facts, Mr. Kilbra, and I will be giving you a call to try to get up to speed on some of those things. Those are extra dollars in our community, and that's why we need to have more of these type of informational meetings to share... type of informational meetings to share information because nobody's all-knowing. And we need to learn as much from you and provide information to you. We need your help to provide information to us as well. That is a powerful piece there. That's a powerful economic piece for this region and this area. And I'm glad that you enlightened us to that, Mr. Kilbrough. And I'll be talking with you shortly.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
My concern today is...